If you've joined via a computer, enter your participant ID followed by the pound or hash sign. Otherwise, you are in meeting now. There are two participants in the meeting. This meeting is being recorded.
I'm the only one that wasn't here.
No, I was a little late starting the meeting. I forgot I had to switch login to login from the council chambers.
No problem. No problem. Oh, Micah, good to see you.
I didn't have any sound for a second. Hi, everybody. Sorry.
No problem.
Good to see you, Mayor.
So it is four o'clock. And I don't know that we have our council totally here.
You got two more coming right now.
Okay, alright.
And I'm not seeing anyone with Loves yet.
Hey, good afternoon. Jose LaMalle is here.
Thanks, Jose. Good to see you.
Okay, so we do have somebody from Loves here. Awesome. Alright, so we've got Dave's, Scott, John, Scott, Scott coming on. Scott Cowan?
Yeah, we talked to him earlier. He's planning on being here.
Alright, so in the essence of time, let me go ahead and get the meeting started and work through maybe about time to get to the main item. Scott will be here. What they call a meeting in order to order, excuse me, January 25th, work session at 4:02 PM. Thank you, everybody, for coming. We've done the roll call. We know Scott Cowan will be here shortly. Staff is here. So the first item business would be asked if there's any comment from the public. And I think there may be a few onboard. Any comments on any topic from the public at this time? Just go ahead and introduce yourself. I think we have a small audience, so. Okay, hearing none. I'm gonna go ahead and go to do business. I'd like to do that first by kind of reading through my comments, putting things in perspective for me personally. Since I'm the guy who's been pushing really hard to have this meeting and I've been around a while and I've been focusing on this system some time and I'm just gonna go through my concerns and maybe set the stage for what I hope is a successful discussion. So from my perspective, when Loves came before the planning commission several years back for land use permit, the public came out en masse to oppose it. Key concerns were the impact on traffic and crime and the typical baggage you might hear relative to most truck stops. Me personally, I've used truck stops all over the western states for many years. If I'm gonna go to a travel center or truck stop, Loves to me is a place to go. They're the best out there throughout the western states and I've said that many times. Because this project was in compliance with zoning laws and with our land use code at that time, the project was approved. The first year or so brought fairly low impact to the city. I personally monitored the number of calls for law enforcement and found that to be quite reasonable for a year or so. But that has changed. We now have many calls for law enforcement support and I appreciate the undersheriff, Micah Smith, for clicking did it so we can talk about that here in a few minutes. But it doesn't just stop there. We have trucks going into and out of Loves without stopping for traffic, creating a hazard in an area where we see increased traffic due to our growth and yes, or had been access created by that. Our volunteers pick up significant amount of food wrapped in cups spewed up and down Old Southern Road from Arby's. And those typically are the closer you get to Arby's, the more treasure their pickup. Very routine for call, routine call for law enforcement deals with trailers being backed into each other. Into other trailers as they try to park. Anyone who uses data at all to help solve problems, I believe, would determine that these are not driver issues, they're design related issues in the parking. A point that was discussed during the discussion with our planning commission at very get go. Millersburg is seeing a, I'm sorry, Millersburg is a city with over 50% footprint devoted to business and industry. We take pride in supporting those businesses as a matter of course and even partner with them in some cases. We have an annual celebration to recognize those businesses which include opportunities to donate, advertise, and even have a booth to help build relations between the community and those businesses. Donations are a very minor focus here, but relationships are a huge focus opportunity. I approached the onsite Loves manager actually two years in a row to see if Loves would like to participate, but no follow up from that manager. Quite frankly, he said, "That's something we gotta be involved with, but that's a higher management decision." I never heard back from him. Speaking of partnerships, a trade one's truck facility right across the street from Loves is a great success story in how we partnered with businesses. That's, I think, well known amongst our entire community. Very proud of that. But back to law enforcement. A couple of years ago, we increased our contract deputy hours from Lynn County Sheriff's Office. We did this due to the impact of our extensive growth and its impact on calls for service. Trouble is those extra man hours and then some more are actually being spent at Loves instead of in our city streets. In fact, it's to me, it's like we're subsidizing that business at the expense of our residents. Given the issues, the city council decided roughly two years ago to pursue a fuel tax. The unanswered question was whether it should be a $3 tax or a $5 tax. But we were concerned that due to COVID, we were not effectively able to get public feedback, so we put that discussion on hold for now. However, we now have the tools to do that and get good input from our community. So if we're not successful here today, and I hope we are, I will be personally pushing forward to get that tool packs, tool tax on the next agenda. So let's see if we can bring some good answers and answers to this table today, and I thank everybody for being here. And now we'll ask Kevin to take over and kind of walk us through the discussions going forward.
Mayor, just to clarify one thing, I think you said a $3 and $5, I think it was a 3 cent and 5 cent fuel tax.
Yeah, thank you.
We could try for that $3 or $5 tax, but who knows? That'd be an interesting one.
Well, I actually voted for the first time saying percentage, so you know, I'm an old guy, I make mistakes. I talk too fast. Well, yeah, it's a $3 and 3 cent and a 5 cent. Thank you.
Alright, so just a quick overview here and the mayor captured a little bit of that. We have undersheriff, Micah Smith, who will go through some slides and give a little bit more of a breakout of this, but just wanted to share kind of what we have seen. So contracts with Lynn County Sheriff's Office. So and this is some things that we've already, I shared previously, some numbers were updated based on some things that we had, we've received from the sheriff's office that were updated. But we do contract with LC SO for our law enforcement services. They're gonna provide an overview of what's been occurring since the opening of Loves in 2018 and the impacts. And it's pretty, when you see the slides, I think it'll be pretty impressive what we've seen happening there. Instances this past year represented 14% or 252 hours of our total 1831 contracted hours in law enforcement, not including time spent on the reports. And based on trends today, it looks like that number is gonna continue to rise. And we've seen a fairly quick with that. So with that, I think Micah has some, an overview to share with us and I believe he'll be prepared to answer any questions that you may have based on that and can drill down a little bit more if you have questions on it. So, Micah.
Excellent. Now you've got me into trying to figure out how I share something.
We could share them for you, but if you wanted to do anything, if you just go on the share button at the bottom, it should be green. There you go.
The giant share button? Yeah, I should have seen that first off. Thank you. That would help. Let's, I don't know how this works on this software, so we'll figure that out. It wants me to give permission to it to share my screen. Goodness gracious. We'll try here. Let's see. This is gonna be a little nutty, but we're gonna make this work.
And we do have a voter to pull it up for you.
Alright, perfect. So again, I appreciate the opportunity to come here and speak with you guys today. Can answer questions as they come up. I'm here to really support our great people that we have working the Millersburg contract and our contract sergeant, Sergeant Steve Framby is in our lieutenant Beth Miller that oversees that. So in looking at this and the conversation coming up, one of the things that I wanted to do is look at it from two perspectives, maybe three now. In how much time do we spend? And then there's the quantity of how many, how many calls, what types of calls and that kind of thing. And then what I also dove into was a little bit of a comparison with the other larger trucks, large truck stop that we have in the county, Pioneer Villa. There's other gas stations and areas in Lynn County, but under contract, a lot of those are in agreement where OSP takes calls there or predominantly does, and we only back them up upon request and mostly on Highway 34. So these two were really the best comparisons that I could offer. And then I also looked at record, RMS stuff, which is reportable crimes where we're taking a police report and we're writing reports and going to court and making arrests and doing things like that. So right off the bat and hopefully somebody unmute if they can't see this. This is the overall data snapshot for the address of Loves going back to 2017. And again, addresses can exist long before the grand opening of a business and things like that. So if it predates for, you know, a little bit, that's why.
Micah?
Yes?
I think if you go to the, the view for the PowerPoint view, so the button, the little screen there on the bottom, I think it'll bring the slides up a little bit larger there.
I wasn't sure if that would work while I was on the Zoom meeting, so yeah.
We, usually when you start a presentation, it automatically shares the presentation instead of your.
I'm getting the spinning beach ball, so this is perfect. Well, is that better?
Yes.
Outstanding. Okay, so this is the 20, this is the, the five year snapshot. And in particular, the, the thing about this is it's giving you a count over all of the nature codes out of the dispatch center for our responses to Loves. And you can see that there are quite a few that are above, say even the 50 mark, traffic stops, extra patrols and trespasses. Now, traffic stop, for example, the infraction may have been over on Morning Star, but by the time we go out with the vehicle and pull them over, so to speak, we call it going out with the vehicle, we're going out at the location of Loves. Or we're working that intersection area underneath I-5 and that sort of thing. Extra patrols, a lot of times we'll log those. The time spent, which you see over on the right, the dispatch to arrive and time spent on scene, those are gonna be pretty small. And we're usually doing that in response to either the city's request for extra patrols or somebody in a management position at the business or to try and address a problem that we're seeing over and over in our crime data. So all of these combined, since Loves opened, we responded to 535 events or calls for service. And in total, spent 28 days, 10 hours, 15 minutes and 7 seconds addressing calls related to Loves. Now, that's CAD data. So if any of these turned into something that required police reports to be written, that's not captured in this time spent. If we had to go to court or if we spent time dealing with a DUI or at a hospital blood draw or anything like that or doing follow up on a theft or taking photographs later on in a disturbance or something, we're not gonna see that reflected in this time here. This is just time captured in CAD.
Micah on that? So with that though, those additional hours that you're talking about that are spent do get charged to the city. They show in our hours per month as well, correct?
It does. To the, to the best of their remembrance, we ask the deputies to go in and fill that out on our time tracking log so that it does reflect accurately the, the hours that are done doing city work related to the contract, I think is what you're getting at. And if that's the case, then yes, that's true. They would be on the city's report. They're not on this one. This snapshot looks just at 2021 and I clicked something and I made a whole other window open. What the heck? And so this gives you just an idea of what we're seeing in 2021, which was up, if you look at the graph in the lower left corner, was up by nearly double the calls in 2020. To say that we're this, I think I pulled these new numbers last night. So we're looking at 17 calls already through this, this part of the year. And I don't have a day by day. I wasn't asked to go into that level of detail, but suffice it to say, we're seeing an upward trend in year over year. As I looked at Pioneer Villa, there we go. Pioneer Villa comparatively has 450 CAD events over the same timeframe. And, and really, if you look that first year, and I have this toolbar in my way and I don't know why it's in my way. So I think it's 202, 17, 16. So here in 2017, we had 70 events. If we, I'm gonna go back two screens. And 2017 was really a partial year with only four calls with Loves. So when we're looking at this from a perspective of the data for Pioneer Villa and 450 CAD events in all this time, it's really all of 2017 and then again, all of 2016. So it's a much bigger data sampling and, and much fuller. We were about 75 fewer, less CAD events, I think, and about seven days worth of time less. As we look into 2021, specifically 103 CAD events, again, I'm gonna bounce back two slides versus 243. We're talking similarly situated businesses, one being along, both being along I-5, both being along major highway route on ramp off ramps. So how does it compare overall? As, as a consortium system management agency, Lynn County serves as the system management agency for the law enforcement and fire data system that all agencies except Lebanon Police and Sweden Police use in all of Lynn and Benton County. So we're covering almost 300,000 people in territory bigger than Rhode Island and Delaware combined on one public safety stack of software. Loves shows up as a, as a figure of involvement. So anytime someone's named in a report, the business is named as a victim, there's an arrest made, a paper served, whether it's to an employee or a person we find that's there getting gas or whatnot, that goes down as an involvement. And so this count of SY involve IDs is what this is referring to. Loves ranks as the 63rd busiest location based on involvements in all of the consortium dating back to April of 2017, when, which is far back as this data lens can go. But if we move forward a little more and just look at Lynn County, Loves is the 32nd busiest location in that same time period. Pioneer Villa lands at 53rd. And then if we just look at 2021, it's the 11th busiest location in Lynn County. The top location is the Lynn County Sheriff's Office and Jail. We take a lot of reports here because this, people walk in and this is the report location. And it also includes any reports of criminal conduct that happens in our jail with inmates. The other, the, the second one on there, 304th Avenue Southwest is the courthouse. We take a lot of reports there, especially arrests for people that get court ordered arrest. And then the next one is transient. And that's if somebody doesn't have an address, we put them in as that. You'll also notice there's a transient one later on and then one for Marion County. So when you're looking at real addresses, there's only about five addresses with more involvements in Lynn County than Loves that aren't a justice center or some sort of government justice location. I was then able to, and that is not a clear image. I apologize for the graininess on the text, but I think it illustrates the situation. I was able to look at just the addresses within the city limits of Millersburg for our contract with Millersburg. And Loves is the most active location by system involvements by more than double the next closest address. So one way or the other, wherever the city council's discussion goes, I'm happy to talk about more of this data. Grab other information if it pleases you and would stand for any questions or points for clarification at this time.
Yeah, this is Cowan. Thank you, Officer Smith. What the, the data you're showing us with Lynn County, that doesn't include anything from OSP, is that correct?
It does not. That's a good point. These numbers don't reflect any medical calls, fire calls, or anything related to Oregon State Police.
And is it, is that something data wise, we should be able to get the same kind of data that you're sharing from OSP if, if we request that? I mean, you might not be able to answer that, then.
I, I don't know. I don't know what their capabilities are to analyze data. Most of this, especially this stuff that you're seeing right here, I built last night sitting on my couch when I had this wild hair idea come up. So I don't know if OSP has guys that do that or not. I couldn't say.
Okay, thank you.
This is Jim. I think our only point of reference might be that we've heard from a number of deputies and Oregon State Police members who live in our community, by the way, talking to us about there's a fair amount of interaction between the sheriff's office and state police in dealing with, with issues there at Loves. So any other comments or questions from the city council?
Mayor, I just make a comment on Councilor Cowan's question. I think the biggest thing to point out is we do know, we have had some discussions with OSP and they do have calls there a number of times a month. Number of those are because we have a number of officers who live here who will swing, you know, they're coming through that area when calls come in and some that are assigned because if it started on OSP's, you know, if it started on the highway, a lot of times they get involved. And there's transfer calls. I think the biggest thing is, you know, what we're discussing today is the impact that the sheriff's office has because that's two contracts for our citizens and what we're seeing. I think the biggest concern we have is the increase in hours that we contracted for a couple of years ago are now being eaten up by Loves versus what it was intended to, to deal with the growth that we had in the community. So when we look at the assessed value that Loves represents, we're spending more than what we receive and from their total assessed value for providing services when we look at the amount of calls that are going on out there versus what we have within the community. So if you look at that, so our current assessed value of Loves is 6.2 million. That represents 1% of our total assessed value. And they're, based on that, our 350 rate is $21,878. And we're currently under a contract currently this year. We're paying $75.51 per hour. So at those 252 hours, you can see we're spending 19,000. Again, that doesn't include the report writing time. This does get charged to the city. So we're well over. I'm pretty confident that amount of time that it's taken and seeing him, seeing deputies here writing reports after an incident at Loves, that we're well north of the 21,000 we see in revenue coming into the city just for the law enforcement. So the most part we're seeing is all of that revenue seen from Loves currently being applied to our law enforcement services. And the concern is based on that trend, we're gonna be subsidizing that. We're probably already doing that and that will continue to happen. So it's, we're not seeing it contribute to other city operations and it's actually drawing and reducing our ability to provide citizens what they would expect to see coming from, from the city. I didn't take a look, but I'm pretty sure if we looked at what we increased in hours here two, three years ago, was about the number of hours that were now being consumed by Loves that was intended to deal with our population growth.
Which is, yeah, I brought that up earlier because of that. We, we looked at that. Thank you, Kevin. Don't wait to cut your shirt. Anything else you want to say?
No, I just wanted to, to point that out because I think that's, that's the biggest focus and that's what can we do to either offset that revenue that we're paying for that or, and or reduce the incidences that are occurring there. And we do have representatives from Loves. I don't know if they, they may have, I don't know if,
Before we go there, I'd like to make sure that other councilmembers have had a chance to speak or ask questions. Okay, so like back to one of my original comments, my hopes personally are, is that we can build a relationship here that works for both of us. Have them be viewed as our membership of our community as being a valued member of our community. So let's work together to do that. But with that said, I guess I would be curious to hear input from the Loves representatives on, on the call, in the meeting. So the time is yours, please.
Alright, thank you, everybody. So my name's Jose LaMalle. I'm actually the district manager for Loves. Like just a little bit about what I do. I cover all of Oregon and Northern California. And in, in my past life and other companies I've worked with, I dealt with something, I guess you would say similar. Some of the things that we've done to reduce here, we can do, we try to reduce the amount of calls is taking care of some of the stuff on our own, whether trying to analyze of what's important for an actual call and what's something that we can take care of to, to reduce the amount of calls. I've worked with the Stockton Police Department down in California and you know, I guess my question would be to see if we have the ability to enter, not necessarily enter in cases, but commit some documents sometimes that we have available and or pictures that we don't necessarily need someone to come out, but we need to, whether it's a, not necessarily restraining order, but to get someone off the property or they're not allowed on the property going forward. And it's helped reduce the amount of calls that we get in that area out by Stockton. I'm able to cut them in half. And I'm here to build a partnership and try to help reduce the amount of calls that we're calling and add a store. And I didn't know if we had the data to see what exactly are the calls that are coming out of the facility itself, so we could try to essentially try to cut those. And then as far as increasing, you know, taxes and stuff like that, that all be done. You know, we have to partner with our legal team. I'm not, I'm here to you know, create that partnership and try to reduce the amount of calls that are coming in there. Help out with that.
Yes. Well, on that point, there've been a couple of calls out of several, obviously, that really kind of disturbed me personally. One is you get a call to have somebody come out to take care of an onsite rule that somebody can't work on their own truck or whatever. That's, that's not a law enforcement problem that we spend hours on that. Another case recently, somebody's, a deputy's called out to deal with a crime situation. The person is subdued. And you didn't want to press charges. Or maybe there's good reason for that because you can't tell what's going on between the lines there, but still, it just gives you the impression that not real that serious. So I, I don't, I appreciate your comment about maybe trying to reduce some of these calls. But I think it's bigger than that. I mean, it's much bigger than that. If that's all you're gonna try to do, that's gonna take a long time to resolve or to even evaluate. I, I'm looking at requesting increased manpower from the sheriff's office, one way or the other, to accommodate this. I know one of the comments made during the discussion when you were applying for your permit was, well, you'd monitor the, the calls for law enforcement support, law enforcement support. If we got too bad, you bring on private security. That was a comment made during the planning, the review of the application for permit. To me, that doesn't get it either because you'll end up still needing the law enforcement support and the security. I think this is bigger than that. I think personally it's much bigger than just going in and screening the calls and maybe thinking more active role. It's like, which, which first step. It had a truth to me though, it's not bigger than that. This is costing us money and that's my bottom line, one of my, one of my concerns.
Alright, I'm all, I'm here as, I guess, you know, representing Loves and it was, I don't know if it was Kim Van Dyk that was on the original when they were setting up the contract, so that was all done by, you know, people. When they were setting up the contract. So that was all done by, you know, people, our team that was at the office. So I've been in Oregon for a year. So. As far as what happened from 2020 on and back, I don't have that information. If my, our real estate team essentially and everybody that was. Part of the original plans when they put everything up and went to, went to the, is not on the call.
Hey, Jose, this is Kim and I am on the call.
Okay, I did.
That's, that's all right. I was going to wait for you to finish and the mayor, and then maybe I'll be able to make a couple of comments.
Okay.
Please, why don't you just go ahead and do that? I'm, I'm done betting.
Well, Mayor. I don't want you to have to bet, number one. We're not, we didn't come to your town to be a problem. And those prior to you that I dealt with, I think they understood that or we wouldn't have been approved to be there. So as Jose. Said, we, we want to be part of the solution. And not see this keep escalating for whatever reasons they are. I haven't. I got on just a minute or two late. I don't know if something was said by you in the first two minutes, but by the. Chief, the under sheriff, I'm sorry, the under sheriff, I did, I, I heard his numbers and that they are what they are. I think the comparison to Pioneer View is a little. Different because their volume's different than ours and they also, their location is different than ours. But irregardless, we're, we're going to want to try to fix the problem if it's coming from us and, and it's something that we can. So. I, I think I would agree that we would like to see. A more detailed. Analysis of what those calls. The 252 hours or I'm, I'm sorry, the 500 and. Whatever it was, 535 calls in five years that equates to eight a week, 8.24 a week. I'd like to know, are those the store calling or a theft issue? And I think any. Retail store just about in the country, if they have thieves in their store, I think the majority probably call. And then the, the location off of the interstate in the city is in larger areas of the West. There, there's a lot of vagrants and we, again, we don't invite them to come to our travel center, but we do try to keep them. Off of our travel center the best that we can. So if we can get those saying, hey, it's, you know, we're getting calls because. I think one of the comments that kind of caught me a little bit is the traffic stops. That bleed into Loves coming off the interstate and the, the road around the corner, just because that's where they're caught. Or whatever and pulled over. Again, I, I don't know that that's Loves that we caused that, but maybe. But I'd like to kind of see if we can't get a little bit more detail of what's really going on there and see which ones we can. Take care of right away or with whatever means we need to.
That data was actually included in under Sheriff Micah Smith's slide. He just, they're not, they couldn't quite see them. So Kevin can send that to you. For further, your further review in more detail. We have, I have it on my phone. I'm looking at it separate from the, my screen, computer screens. I have it. On my phone. I can, I can see every bit of it right here very clearly. So we'll get that to you so you can better, better see what they really are.
And.
Pretty full spreadsheet.
Yeah, Mayor, if there's greater level of detail that, that we need. To attempt to provide, we, we surely can do that. I would, I would argue, and I haven't done this for a long time, where there's, where there's things that attract people. Things being businesses, restaurants, entertainment centers, business and finance districts and whatever. Or a truck stop, people are naturally drawn to those locations and we work in and around those locations. So while the traffic stops end up at. Loves and that then gets attributed to that, that address, it is a inherent function of being a business that is working within the city of Millersburg. That you're going to have an extra. Large volume of traffic going in and out of there and then thereby having people that are committing traffic violations in and around those businesses. And so I think the two go hand in hand. As far as extra patrols go, which is the second highest one on the list, we're doing those to try and curtail having to come back and spend longer amounts of time doing more and more activities there. And a lot of times it's at the request of employees at the stores or citizens as well as. City council members and the mayor's office and city manager's office, but we're happy to provide that. Just two comments on one of, I guess, the, the call cutting type of angle, if I could, from a law enforcement perspective. My large concern is. In, in competing or somehow regulating the employee's use of ability to call the police. Because typically what we find when that happens is things then get handled by whomever might be there and they escalate. And then by the time we do get there and they do call, they're well blown out of proportion or they're blown out of scale. And. If we would have just gotten called earlier, we could have kept them at a lower level. We could have de-escalated things, kept parties separate, prevented physical assaults, damages to vehicles, damages to buildings, things like that. So I, I would really suggest that while we can go through some more mitigation training and de-escalation training with employees. We often find that if we're called early, we can usually prevent it from getting escalated. And the second is that Lynn County Sheriff's Office doesn't do online reporting. We believe in providing a service. Every time a service is requested, we send a deputy. I've gone to dinner tables where 12-year-olds won't eat the broccoli and sat down and eaten a plate of broccoli with a kid before. Because a parent decided that that was the best course of action. So we will respond in person to every call for service. And that's a commitment that we've made to our citizens. We also don't have a phone tree. You call the sheriff's office, somebody will answer that phone 24 hours a day, seven days a week, usually by the second ring. And that's an unwavering commitment that we have there. So with that regard, the, where you were saying is on trespasses. We would just go online, you would go online and fill out a form and tell us somebody was trespassed. The, the problem with that, quite honestly, is the. The time that we spend there dealing with trespasses isn't going there to get someone's name and date of birth and to find out that they're trespassed. We've spent. Over the calls, we've spent over three days, 14 hours there dealing with trespasses. That's because when we get called, we then have to deal with the person trespassed and get them to leave. Because Loves is asking us to get them to leave and get their vehicle off the property so they don't come back. And get them out of the restrooms if they're illegally using showers and everything else. So it's, it's more than just getting a name because they're trespassed. It's actually executing. The desire of Loves and Loves management and staff to trespass that person. So I just, I'll leave it at that and, and be here for any clarification. Thank you.
Let me try making him a recommendation for moving forward and you can shoot holes through it if you like, but. Can we get all the data that we have to Loves for further clarification review? And ask Los representatives to. Get back to us within a month with your input on where you'd like this to go to help us get resolution. That would be for our March council meeting, which I believe would be on March 8th. So I guess you're tying to review what we have, I guess, what we have been saying. Talk among yourselves, back to Kevin, our city manager, Kevin Creitman, with your thoughts on how he might move forward. Is that a, is that a good starting point from here?
This is Kim and I, I think that's fine with me. Jose could also chime in if he's got a comment, but that, that's fine with me. And in hopes of us reviewing this and maybe by that time being able to offer. Our thoughts and. Sol, to the solutions to this, I would hope that you and your staff counsel could do the same.
Thank you. Any concerns or thoughts regarding that approach from our staff or council?
Oh, Jim, I think that's a great approach at this point is obviously we got to get to the drawing table and look for options, right? And definitely give Loves the option. For the ability to decipher what's coming in and then what, what they can, they can do to help, help solve it. That being said, for you, Kim, I'm, I'm one of these guys where as everybody's talking, reading all this data, I'd like to do a lot of research. Something I do like about the virtual, virtual meetings here is I can sit over here and I can Google a bunch of stuff. Looking up here, you know, and I, I was mostly looking at truck, truck stop crime, especially Loves truck stop crime. You know, it seems to me when, when truck stops go in and I'm just reading here this on the internet, a, a different councils. That this is a concern that a lot of cities have when truck stops go in. I'm also kind of noticing here that, and I'm just doing a quick read, read here on it, seeing what we're seeing. So I want to see if we're a unique situ, situation. And kind of what I'm, what I'm seeing, and correct me if I'm wrong, is that crime at truck stops in general. It seemed to be kind of going up across the board, across the US. Obviously with some areas worse than others. Is that, are you seeing, seeing that at all?
Well, this is Kim again, and Jose, if you want to chime in, please do so. I, I, I have been out of operations for 16 years. I'm, I'm only in real estate. So I can't tell you what. Increase we've seen. But what I. Feel is what I read on the news and everywhere else. All of that probably has started happening in a greater degree in the last two years. We, we all know what's going on. And the newest thing is, and correct me if I'm wrong. Mr. Smith, but now it's a new breed of. People going in, smashing in all the water, windows and businesses and tearing, ripping them off. And now they've found a new way to get a lot of money, a lot of things. And hard to catch all 50 of them that break. Is that not accurate? I, I mean, I'm just going by what I hear on the news and COVID is keeping people locked up. They're getting. High tension, stress. I don't know. But if you compare us as a business to having more. Cases of crime than the local dentist office, yes. We have more people coming in there. We have people from not your town coming into our travel stops, but they need fuel, they need to eat. They need to take a shower, a break, whatever it is. That's why we're on the interstates, but you're not getting that from. Maybe businesses in town, no matter what they are, if, if they don't have the similar. Traffic and population that comes to us. So not saying that, you know. Can't do a better job. I'm not saying that. I'm just saying it's a little different type of business.
So Kim and Jose, I, this is Kevin. I, I think one of the things that we want to look to accomplish, I know that this has been a very popular site since it's opened. I, you can't go by there at night. You don't find it's, it's above capacity. And trucks looking for places to park and stuff. And I think it's, I have, I don't know what, how it compares to others, but from what we see, it appears to be very. Busy, very active location for Loves. On it. I know when you and I talked earlier this year, that, you know, they were looking, they would like to potentially look. We were talking about even additional parking and additional facility things here. I think what we want to try to avoid is right now, I think if something like that were to occur and you were to come forward to the planning commission, we would probably have a fairly full audience. Against that. And the expansion. And I don't think, we want to try to avoid that. And I think it's important that the community sees Loves as a partner versus a problem. As Mayor mentioned earlier, and I think that's one of the big, big keys, keys for us. You know, it's, it's an important asset to, you know, we need trucks, truck stops are needed. I don't think anyone disregards that, but. We also have to be aware of what we can do to change the perception.
Yeah, and I, Jose. And dealing with, with Loves and with different locations throughout. The West. I referenced Stockton, California, where we deal with, you know, something at a much greater scale. And partnering with other businesses that are around us and actually getting into action with, with the police department, with the sheriff's department. We've been able to reduce a lot of it without any additional expense to them. So we want to build a partnership. Like I said, we, we built one of these in my community. And it's, it's one of the best things that, that that community has ever done. And, you know, the local undersheriff, the sheriff, the police department that's there truly enjoy the facility. It, it happens in different areas, I would say, there's some areas that are greater than others, but we've been pretty successful with. Creating that partnership with, with the community and with the county and trying to reduce some of these issues that, that, that we're able to reduce. We're not telling our employees to. You know, arrest anybody or, or create a team, but hey, are they calling in for a stick of gun where they shouldn't be, where we have the loss prevention team that could help us out and. Deal with some of that, mitigate some of it. So we were able to reduce a lot of the calls that don't necessarily need to be called upon. Is there other things that we need to call where someone's getting attacked or hurt? Absolutely. But we're able to, we've been able to partner and, and have been pretty successful with, with. Being able to reduce it in some of these other areas that. Are in a. Crime rate that, that we've dealt with a lot higher. And I think, I think building that relationship and. Being able to mitigate some of the small stuff that he doesn't need to get called in for, I think could help dramatically.
Okay, thank you. I've actually spent a lot of time with Stockton also. And if you made that kind of progress in a time like that, you're pretty awesome. Very good. Thank you. Comments to anybody else before we close?
Yeah, I got a real quick one. It's something we're closing, so maybe it's not necessary, but I think we're getting far out in the weeds on talking about other locations everywhere else. That Loves does business or what their crime rates might be or whatever else. Cause ultimately I know that I was elected to look after Millersburg, not Stockton, nowhere else. So. As long as we're confident in what we have for our information coming from the sheriff's department. I'm good with giving Loves a, a month to look it all over, but I'm, I'm just really not concerned with anything else but what we're dealing with here. And if they can mitigate that themselves and prove that to the city, that's great. If not, I think we should, you know, go forward and figure out what works for the city. Cause again, it's for the city. I mean, I think, you know, I use Loves quite often too. And I think there's a reason why they try to build away from cities because. Quite frankly, this has got to be a cost of doing business. It's a, and if it's not, I'm surprised that it's not when you operate within a city. So I think that's probably the benefit of being on an interstate outside of a major city or any city at all. But again, I think we're getting a little bit too far on the weeds on wherever, what's happening everywhere else. When really we're supposed to be looking at military.
Dave, that's, you made a good point because it kind of puts in perspective. You know, we don't have a lot of service related industries or businesses within Millersburg that would draw a lot of traffic like this. We're, we're kind of unique in that way. And I don't think there's any business in town that's a magnet for law enforcement requirements. Other than what we're currently experiencing with Loves. So we have a focused, like focused situation here. Huge opportunity to turn around, working together. So let's hope that we can do that. I really welcome feedback from the Los representatives. See where it takes us.
Mayor, I would say that, uh. I would echo what counselor said that we're focused on dealing with Lynn County issues as well and our value partners in our contract cities and. As well as the businesses that do business here, we're at the table. If there's something collaboratively we can do, whether it's with our community resource coordinators, whether it's doing employee trainings or taking part in any conversations, you can count on us to be there. But ultimately our, our contract by statute is with the citizens of Lynn County and this enhanced law enforcement contract is with Millersburg. And we're going to take your lead. And if you need something from us or you get something from the Loves representatives. We are wide open to helping you in whatever way we can solve this community livability issue because. We're a value partner with you and, and you can rely on us to be there. So thank you.
Thank you, Micah. Well said. I appreciate that. Okay, last call. Any other comments? Kevin, are you going to kind of pack it together to send to the loves to Kim?
It's our even sense. So they, okay, I suppose they should have it in their mailbox.
Awesome. Thank you so much. Okay, so. To Kim and Jose, if you have any questions over the next few weeks, go ahead and just contact Kevin directly and work through this and hopefully by early March, we will be pleased with where we're at.
Sounds good. Thank you for your time.
Thank you for coming on, Buzz. Thank you. Thank you for coming on, Jose. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. So going on now to your public comment, I'm assuming we still have nobody else on board from the public. But if there is, please speak up if you have a comment or question. Any closing council comments? You have any kind? Very none. First of all, I would thank, Micah, thanks so much for being here and all the work you did in preparation for this. Appreciate your comments very much. But any, thank you, Pat. The, we're adjourned to work session in preparation for going directly into an executive session. And I guess I'm concerned, Kevin, that's 4:50. We have people coming on board on the outside at 5. Is that correct?
Yep, they're, they're ready. I'm just going to text them and email them. Let them know.
Okay. So Micah, thank you so much. We're going executive session, so.
I don't want to be there.
You don't want to be here. I gotta find my script. Force to get that.
I'm going to end the recording.